Well, we have the order. They asked the clerk to stand a little longer for weather, so he's been enjoying us remotely this evening. So I will ask him if he is available to call a roll.
Can you hear us, sir?
Yes. Hello, everyone. Alex Basset.
Here.
Zachary Bullock.
Here.
Daniel Grisco.
Here.
Meredith Hines.
Here.
Stuart Munson.
Here.
Eddie Payne.
Yeah.
And Mayor.
I'm here, so Meredith is joining us remotely tonight, so let's start now and we ask Meredith, are you going to use one of your excuse absences so you can vote or are you going to be in a non-voting situation tonight?
Uh, I'm sorry, ask me that again?
You know, as a remote participant, you don't, you're not able to vote unless you're using one of your couple of excuse absences. Are you going to be in a position to mic the vote or not?
I am in a position to vote, yes.
Okay, so you've used one of your excuse absences?
Yes.
I ask everyone to stand and we'll have our questions ready.
The agents to comply of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I agree on it. It's a consent calendar which includes the approval of tonight's agenda. Approval of meeting minutes from March fourteenth and the work session February twenty-second and March twenty-first. I'm actually reporting March twenty-two and the resolution to support a spray bar partnership project. I hear a motion to accept the consent calendar.
I move.
I'll second.
Move in second in our favor.
Aye.
Host. Okay. Item three is a public forum which includes public comment on the police policy on portable audio video recorder. Anything, any public comment or anything other than the audio video recording.
Yes, for Mayor Gill. I say it with.
We have some bill number thirty-three, James River Road. And I am here to remind people what's going on in the world because we have one time councilor who was affected by what's going on in the country. Eddie. I am thinking of you and you like every day as what's going on there. And what's going on there is so much more important to our democracy than the issues what they see here in Scottsville today. And everybody in this room and those who are consumed with the positive and the negative of everything this town wants to do and needs to do, needs to be mindful of what we have in this country, in the state of Virginia, I'm sorry, Commonwealth of Virginia and the town of Scottsville. And my heart is with you and you want in all of this because I know it's painful, painful to you more than it is to us because you have such a personal connection to what's going on there. So you know that I'm thinking of you every single day.
That's accurate.
And not just because of.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. Any other members of the public which should speak? Let me ask Mr. Lawless, is there anything we need in comments we need to make on the police policy that's on weekend?
The, um, the type of policy that's here, Mr. Mayor relating to the, the use of the portable, portable audio and video recorders within the police department. Those are the car cameras and the body worn cameras. State law requires that a change to that policy be publicized. Um, it's not the same legal status as a public hearing like on a zoning matter, but to show into the public record that this policy is changing. Chief Jenkins is happy to explain the policy if anyone's interested. Um, it doesn't need an approval vote, um, but just to show into the public record that the policy is, um, up for change and to invite any comment on, um, how those recordings are used or stored.
Is anyone present or anyone on Zoom that wishes a further explanation of the portable audio video recorder policy? And here are your comments and I will ask any more public, uh, input on any other items. Then we will close the public, uh, forum session of our meeting this evening. Since we do have the chief with us, I'll take a moment and ask if he has anything he wishes to speak to, any situations, problems or anything. I know he's been busy the last week with a number of different things going on and, uh, it's unfortunate some of those were not something we want to have happen.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, thank you for having me this evening. Um, as you know, one of our final officers did respond out to the leadership crew to assist with the initial response out there to residents. And I know ACP has committed a lot of resources to figure out what has happened out there. Off the land, your commanders, uh, the other day, waiting on some forensic information to come back from the examiner's office. And hopefully they'll know something as soon as they finish up their examination. Uh, the individual out here at the shopping center a few days prior to, um, that individual was taken into custody at Route six after he had tried a porsetifier out at the Uline uh, next to the propane tanks and then had gone across the parking lot to the, uh, the bank. And, um, went inside the bank and it was a little curious to what actions he was taking inside the bank. Um, the quick thinking of our towors in the bank realized that there was something not right with this gentleman and locked the doors and fortunately no one inside the bank was injured and no one outside of the bank during the pursuit as well. So he's in custody and, uh, last check he was still in jail.
Good. Any of you have questions to?
No, thank you very much for your service to me that.
Yes, sir.
And we appreciate how you do. I saw Officer Wood yesterday, uh, uh, initiating a traffic stop and it was stopped for speeding through the twenty-five mile private zone and I appreciated his actions.
Yes, sir. Um, I think I talked to, to our officers and I think what we're going to do is when we get to the point, uh, where right now we're, we're educating our community, our commuting community that, uh, what the speed limits are in the town. Trying to be in compliance with inspections and registrations, uh, at some point, possibly at the end of this month. I know in May particular ticket starts, um, I think what I'm going to do is once we start our highway safety campaign in the town, I think each week I'll, uh, select a couple of different primary locations within the town posted on our, our department Facebook page where we will be focusing primarily our enforcement efforts. Uh, that way the community is aware and hopefully we can gain more compliance than we have to, uh, do enforcement. So I think it's the right thing to do. I've seen it done both ways. I think it's more transparency in, uh, with our community members is to announce where our primary focus our highway safety efforts currently. And hopefully it'll help slow our commuters through the town now.
We appreciate it. Thanks so much. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you do have a raised hand for public comment online. Mr. Jackson, Jack Maxwell.
Yes, sir. Mr. Maxwell, go right ahead.
Good morning, Evan. What? How is everybody doing today on this YF the weather day? Hey, so heads up, we are working on a dashboard for our emergency operations plans for town Scottsville. I am in the process of updating every, all the files, be all the tronic. Um, the thing will have a brand new, um, fun hands-on, um, things for everybody to be able to use. So basically I'm working with fire department on having them to be trained on, on how to use the application. Um, where we'd be able to go door to door, check off those people who are accounted for, so make sure everybody's accounted for. I know that we had one issue back in, I guess it's twenty eighteen, if I am correct, that we forgot to check. The department's on one fifty-nine, one fifty-seven on James River Apartments. Nobody knew they were parts behind. Um, one fifty-seven, one fifty-nine, and so we just want to make sure those people are accounted for so we don't make that mistake again.
Thank you so much, Mr. Maxwell. How are you doing?
And so we should, we're working on it right now. Um, we're partnering with an emergency manager at New York City who, um, is doing pretty good. So I'm sending everybody a screenshot. What's it look like? So I have a cool overview of Scottsville.
Mr. Mayor, comment?
Yes, sir.
Um, Jack, uh, you're, um, all the things you do, but you are, uh, not affiliated directly as a government employee or as a government person. This is, uh, a personal undertaking, uh, for the good of the community. Would I be fair in saying that?
Yes.
Okay, having said that, um, the county of Alton Mall and the town of Scottsville, uh, police, fire, rescue have their own emergency plan when it comes to, to something like this. And I don't, for all the good that Jack and volunteers could do, we have a plan in force. And before he would implement that, I think he should contact all three agencies, um, and make sure that he's in compliance. I think that's a fair way to put it. Thank you.
Mr. Gill?
Yes, um, question for our chief. So I have read that our governor is going to change out the plans for, um, farm use yields. And as you know, there are several cars running around with farmer's vehicle tags. So how does that impact what you're doing?
I'm not, I can still probably do that question. I'm not sure that it impacts how we are doing with business. I, I know what it will require is our farm use tags to be registered through B and B, which hopefully will make it much easier for us to identify the legitimate farm use tag on vehicles versus the non-legitimate.
So this is something where someone can't just go to, let's say, a farm use store and buy farm use vehicles and put them on you?
The way I read it, you're exactly right.
Thank you. I see.
You wonder sometimes about those farm use vehicles, especially when they're already seen.
Can't, can't say I've ever seen that, but.
Just throw a bale of hay in the trunk, you got it, mate.
Okay, moving on. There's more, not a whole lot more to report than, uh, at the work session, uh, but just to recap a couple of things. Uh, and the vice mayor's absence at the planning commission this month, I sat in for him and first thing was to thank the, uh, planning commission for all the hard work they do on everything that they have undertaken. We have a really good planning commission right now and they're very dedicated and they're very knowledgeable. And in the areas that they are less knowledgeable, they're making every effort to learn about those things best, uh, that they can. Uh, we talked about Airbnb and it was brought forward that, um, there, the Airbnb websites, they say there's twenty-some Airbnbs around Scottsville, while some of those might be fifteen or twenty miles away. In town, we have like eight. And so we don't have twenty-two Airbnb's and some people may have bought. Uh, let's see, they're working on, uh, putting together a program where the special plan use development, uh, uh, questions in the thoroughly explained to those that are interested and, um, checked around with our vendors at Farmer's Market this past weekend and made sure things were going well with them, if they had any questions. Uh, it was great to see about two hundred children, uh, having an Easter egg hunt on the, uh, soccer field. A lot of people in town. It was just, uh, it was really a nice Saturday in Scottsville. So that's, uh, sort of completes my update of my report and I'll ask Vice Mayor Dan to, uh, see if he has anything he wants to add or lay a rule for it.
I do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much. So moving on to down the agenda, item number five, which charter committees, we just start down on the end. Mr. Wilson, do you have anything on events right now?
We're just, uh, keep doing some planning, reaching out to people, done some more stuff with, uh, some of our respective vendors. Uh, John, one of the board of taverns, charter committee, he's done a lot of good work for us. He's contacted, uh, some of the radio stations and got us bundled together for advertising. Uh, we're still in a little work in on partying. Actually, can be everything we're having, uh, is going to kind of keep that parking lot for them. And have a walking track of good for it, but, uh, I think possibly using cable school parking lot or just kind of maximizing for around town. Other than that, so it's going to be a very well.
Super. Besides, you have anything to add to that?
Um, I was contacted by one of our food vendors, uh, yesterday who unfortunately dropped out. But I did receive a very timely email from Matt Lawless this morning, so, um, somebody who was looking to be a food vendor for Fourth of July. So I'm going to speak to her about if she would perhaps like to do the Batteau Festival as well. Um, but other than that, that's the only, uh, thing that, little, little kink, but should be doing well.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Bull.
Uh, yeah, architectural review board, uh, number of updates and then a couple of things that I know. I was looking for feedback from the council about the work session that I was attending on Monday. Uh, we approved three COAs, uh, one of which I'll come back to this title. Tiger Fuel did not, in fact, that's just that. Uh, three fifty Valley Street Field, um, nation building, um, property owners moving forward with rehabilitation work. Uh, looking for apartments going on the second floor, so we approved the second floor. Uh, we also approved the rebuilding of a brick front step, um, property very near, dear to my heart. That's looking, we'll be moving forward soon. So we approved two COAs, um, for those. Uh, Tiger Fuel, we still have not approved anything related to the site plan yet. Uh, we've been looking really closely at the trees along Valley Street and James River Road. Uh, we've gotten some commitment from Tiger Fuel that if, uh, V dot allows them to preserve some of the larger trees on the corner there. So there's a big maple and an old oak that are pretty substantial to get to keep. I think we're going to be able to keep the trees that are immediately along Valley Street, which are separated from the Tiger Fuel site by a driveway. Um, so in any event, at our next meeting, I'm hoping that we'll be able to move forward with the book on approval of the site plan for the COA. Um, things that we're looking for is a more specific landscaping plan that includes the significant trees that will be preserved, integrated into the site as well as specifics about the plantings that are going to go in there. They'll all be native species. Uh, but we've had a commitment for higher caliber trees, so they'll be thicker, more mature if they grow. Um, as well as more dense bushes along the roadway to prevent light pollution from cars crossing the street. Uh, we'll also be looking for materials about their sign, which was submitted too large, I think twice the size of the Loudmaw entrance corridor. And we're also asking for some type of Scottsville designation, which would not necessarily be part of their current corporate branding. But that sign is going to be very prominent in town. It's going to be like our second welcome sign. And so we've asked if we can get a designation of the market Scottsville for something like that, just to make it sort of another lovely sign in town. Um, we'll also be looking for, there's going to be a dumpster on the site. And we need the enclosure design and materials for that, um, especially if it's going to be visible from each one. Uh, so those are the things that we are, oh, a parking lot, blank shield for the taller parking lots. So those are the things that we're looking for. Um, and they're, it sounds like they're ready to provide it to us in May. So hopefully we'll, we'll have a much more specific plan in front of us. Uh, but I appreciate the process that we've gone through with Tiger Fuel. I appreciate Eric Booth who's been, uh, on site as well as part of the trees. We have tag trees and it does some really careful thinking for us, um, about this site. It's a very sensitive one, very transport. Uh, moving forward, uh, CSX has one of our poor condition properties. Mailings has got all four condition property, they've identified the ARB has placed a place for remediation. Um, CSX is a little unique. The train depot is in poor condition because of the deterioration of the wood underneath the roof. Uh, they have given us a grant for five thousand dollars, uh, to do the work. And I guess a few months ago, we signed a contract that would allow us access to do the work ourselves. They not willing to pay to, for the labor. So the five thousand dollars will pay for the materials, but it will not pay for the labor to get it done. And so being that that's a part of the future of our entrance corridor and a significantly historic structure and I think built from local brick. Hmm. As I read from the Ruth Klipstein book recently, which if you haven't picked up, you should. But I think that trendy book built out of bricks that were, that were made local, which is kind of another historical significance to that. In any event, um, so the ARB was asking council to make an appropriation from our budget, um, to, to pay to get that work under contract and done this season before it deteriorates. So I don't know where we are with that. That's what I'm sort of, and so I'm asking.
I need to do that. I need the pricing is one thing.
Okay, so once we get some pricing back, I'd like to take a look at moving forward with that this, this season. And lastly, uh, clutter ordinance, um, HB one seven seven eight, last year, the general assembly gives towns and counties the authority to create a clutter ordinance to have things that are not a health hazard cleaned up in properties, um, that are collecting around town. We have a couple of chronic Fletcher in town that have gained the attention of a number of people, residents, business owners, uh, public health and safety folks. Um, and I raised this last year because we don't really have any power in our historic district to do anything about it. Um, and this seems like something the council is interested in exploring, um, for our town. And so, uh, the ARB was asking the government services to take a look at the language. The county now has one. And I know Jim Bowler, our town attorney, has now provided some guidance about how we might fit that into our ordinances. And so I'd like government services to take a look at that and provide feedback to council to see if there's something that would work, uh, for our purposes in town. If not the whole town, I think the historic district would be a suitable place for it. So, um, that's it from the ARB. Any questions?
Mr. Gill wanted to say all about the bricks.
I know, he's in the story.
Yeah.
Talked all about it.
Friend of Senator Martin.
Yeah. Now I look around town like, oh, the bricks. I think my neighbors' children's made out this brick.
I think mine was too.
Um, I sort of covered the planning commission a bit. I don't know if Mr. Fisher had anything else to add.
Yeah.
So, Ron Munson, the economic development, he also had a short chat straight in the story.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's, the culmination of that is this Wednesday. So we have, uh, got a grant from the state, uh, to give away forty thousand dollars, um, to, uh, I think we've got two, um, there we go. We'll be giving away four grants. Um, we have judges from, uh, here in Scottsville who are run successful businesses. Um, and we've got seven pitches. Is that correct, man?
Yes, sir.
Seven. So, uh, we've got folks who've been here for six weeks learning how to start and run a business. Um, some of them have already run, set up and run some businesses. Some people are, are new to this. Um, they're going to be doing a, uh, they've all written business plans and they'll be giving, pitching those business plans here on Wednesday and competing for forty thousand dollars in grant money to start a business here in a, uh, a location in Scottsville. Um, open to the public. It should be a lot of fun. It's all going to be, uh, live. So we'll be here in the pitches and the judges will be judging and we'll be, uh, writing the checks on, on, uh, Wednesday. And then we're all going down to the tavern for a reception afterwards. So, uh, come on down, bring your family and you'll be better than reality TV.
Any questions for Mr. Munson?
Yes, ma'am.
Who are the judges?
Uh, we have, um, Rodney Harris, uh, Daisy from We Grow, Alexandria from, um, Alessandria, excuse me, from, um, Amici's, um, Jay Fang, uh, Clayton from the Batteau and somebody whose name is escaping me.
Uh, Mr. Shannon from the Small Business Development Center staff.
Yes, thank you. Yep.
So of these seven applicants, how many can win money?
None of them can win money. Oh, sorry, the applicants, uh, will have, we have four grants and seven, yeah. Yep. And they're in various levels of readiness to actually open. So, um, some of them will, will, are really not ready at this point, but they're going to be pitching to get feedback primarily from the judges. But there are at least four or five that are ready to open business and ready to, to, looking to get some money. So there's not enough money to go around and everyone's going to be pitching for hard, pitching hard. So it should be, uh, should be good.
All right. If there's not enough open store furniture or available store furniture, will they be able to use these grants for, you know, local business, you know, if they're not somewhere else or if there's not, there'll be a lot of new.
Yeah, they have to, you have to open in, uh, have a physical presence in Scottsville. Yeah, it doesn't have to be retail necessarily. If they're producing, you know, something, it could be in that, well, for example, and this is not one, unfortunately, it's happening. But, uh, there was a group of folks who are interested in opening a co-op, um, kitchen down in the old post office. So would not necessarily have been a retail space, but, um, people. So would not necessarily have been a retail space, but people go in there, rent, rent space and have a commercial kitchen in there that they could actually produce things that could be sold somewhere else. But the business operation would be here in Scottsville and it would be taking up an empty space.
Any other questions for Mr. Bullock? Uh, any government services and politics?
Scotts Reg, certainly our committee has some volunteers. He took some very nice notes, I'm sure he would like for me to pass along to you tonight. And I walked out of the house with Adam. But just from memory of Matt's got my back. Our discussion this past Tuesday was on the appearance of the town of Scottsville, which seems to be a theme of their committee. And we were all just about unanimous in saying that Valley Street and Main Street is where the majority of the business has come, and business is done, et cetera. So as far as maintenance, cleaning, I guess you could call it genitorial, even though it's outside. That should be our priority here in town. First impressions do make a difference. And then after that, we went on to talk about the different duties of the maintenance department here in Scottsville, specifically weeding, especially this time of year into the fall, and the grass cutting, trying to just look at the different duties that maintenance has and make sure that they're utilizing, you know, their time properly. At the same time, not being, you know, overworked or, you know, burdened down with us telling them what to do, having them take their initiative to do the job. Is that about it, Matt?
That's right. We, we talked at the end of that meeting, looking ahead at reviewing some of the town personnel policies.
Yes.
The committee spent a fair amount of time on that about five years ago. And we've had some changes in things like telework that aren't covered very clearly in what we have now. So that, that'll be fruitful going forward, as well as the referral from Mr. Bullock about clutter and trash. It's good things to talk about when Mr. Bullock gets back on his trip.
That's right, I'm kind of tired of seeing what Mr. Bullock was saying too, so.
It does, for sure, because he's made it one of those clutter spots. But you mentioned maintenance, and I think, I bet you guys are talking about it. And now that we have a full-time maintenance, our head of maintenance, and I know that it's something that we hear a lot from the community about, right, for town maintenance and where we are with that. I'm, I was wondering if it would be worthwhile having our head of maintenance make a report to us during work sessions, sort of like our chief of police, so that we can get feedback, so that we know where we are in the maintenance plan for the year, the season. And that way we can directly communicate with our head of maintenance, what issues we're hearing or what we're seeing, so that we even have a better sense of how maintenance is done in town. But I feel like that's something that I don't always have a good sense of. But I hear things about and I want to provide feedback too. So I think, I'd like to sort of pitch that idea that one of our staff reports during work session comes tomorrow, our head of maintenance.
And trash pickup and the conditions of the public restrooms that are now based, and even to some extent, the one next to the Paulus Market are definitely a priority with our committee. I'm sure with you all too, you too. That's all, thank you.
Thanks, any other questions for Mr. Payne? I'm asking Mr. Wallace to get our maintenance department on the work session agenda.
Yes, sir.
Next on our agenda this evening is special use permit for tourist lodgings at 474, 496 Valley Street. I have a public hearing tonight on that. I'll ask Mr. Wallace to give a little bit of the background, what's going on, and have you speak.
Yes, sir. Let me welcome as well our applicant, Miss Carmel Reer, the property owner of these properties. The application is for tourist lodgings at these two addresses, which are right next to each other, 474 and 496 Valley Street. Planning Commission worked on this, held their public hearing and recommended approval. We had a delay on it, which I apologize for bringing it to this point. Architectural Review Board has also dealt with this matter and approved some certificates of appropriateness related to the rehab on these buildings. But the policy question about the future use of them is still up for town council. So thank you, Mr. Here, I'd invite you to speak to the project's stakeholders.
Let me open the public hearing on this, and you can be the first speaker and I'll be part of the record.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so my name is Carmel Reer and my husband and my family, we moved here last summer and are quite, quite smitten with the town of Scottsville. And basically, so this is currently, both, those 474 apartments are currently vacant and in a state of pretty tremendous disrepair. And so when we were thinking about what would be a good use for this building, I, I think that what we'd like to do is basically create a mini hotel, which will be rented via Airbnb. But I think in terms of concept and in terms of branding, will be thought of more as a little mini hotel, which I understand at one point this was anyway, this building actually had that used at some point in its history. And, and I think that that would serve the town well for a number of reasons. It's really the only use we can think of that will enable us to do a really thorough and substantial renovation, not just kind of like painting something that really needs to be massively repaired. And, and I think it will also, the town, I think, could use, Scottsville should be a major tourist destination in Alamo County because it has such a fabulously rich history and it's such a beautiful town. And I think the reason why tourist dollars are important in Scottsville is that those are people who, you know, they're not going to brew their own coffee. They're probably going to walk across the street to Bane's and get a cup of coffee. They're, you know, they're not going to go to Cooline and buy a bottle of wine, which, nothing wrong with that. But they're probably going to go across the street to the Bateau, get some wine. So I think that in order for the businesses along Valley Street to thrive, they really need more customers. And I think that this would be providing more customers instead of providing a competitive business, basically. And then as an auxiliary kind of tweak on the concept, I'm an architect and I've worked for years and years of building practice in Washington DC before I paint here. And I've always wanted to have, and I, I do architecture and interiors, and I've always wanted to have a store. But in the age of Amazon, it's really difficult to make a retail store of any type make any sense. And so the concept with these units is that they will also be, everything within the units will be for sale. So they'll be very curated and very designed. And it's not going to be just like, you know, Ikea from town that you can rent. This is going to be very intentional. And, and so I think that would just bring one more layer of interest to the town because they will be shoppable by appointment only, primarily marketed to the trade. But then also, you know, it'll just be one more thing that the town has happening, but it won't be kind of a desolate storefront where it's a retail operation that really can't generate the revenue necessary to be, be a thriving enterprise. I think, and I'm happy to talk about the, you know, the, the ARB, I don't know if this work cares so much about. But the bottom line is, in terms of the facade, we want to restore the facade and do a crisp black and white oning, which the ARB kindly approved in place of the one that's kind of dilapidated. The rear will get completely overhauled and, and this will be done, assuming it's approved. This will be a historic preservation tax credit project, so it will be stringently overseen in terms of its historic merits.
How many use could just include, what's yours?
Um, three.
Three?
Yeah.
Okay. And you think it's ample parking for three there?
Yeah, and I think Scottsville has such an abundance of parking, it's notable.
You're the first person I've ever heard say that.
Well, I'm coming from Washington DC, so where, you know, I mean, it's like parking's a brain for this guy.
Well, I tell you what, be here and do not the fourth.
No, that's another story.
You'll take a hike to get here. Yeah. Thank you.
But yeah, the whole back is actually paved, it's a very big parking lot.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just thinking, I just wanted to, was a concern of yours, because parking is always a concern we have here for everybody.
And so it's not like parking will be in the rear for basic security. And the third unit is the telephone exchange building?
Well, it's actually a fourth unit because then there's the front, the front, which I believe will be a commercial space.
Yeah, I think this is a great idea. We need more places for people to stay in town, you know, and, and more traffic in town. I think as, as you said, it's going to be great for business. So I love the fact that you're going to be rehabbing this property as well too, because it, it needs it, you know, and it needs a, needs, it's a beautiful building, but it definitely needs some work. So I'm glad to see someone interested in doing that.
Yeah, no, we're super, super, I'm actually a contract purchaser, so we hopefully, you know, we close on it tomorrow.
Yeah.
We just want to put some 330 Valley Street.
Excellent.
So the two renovations, 330 lots will start tomorrow, but the renovations can happen in conjunction.
Any idea what your timeframe is for opening this?
Well, you know, anybody in construction who gives a timeframe is cool. That's the first rule of construction.
Yeah.
However, I would like it to be wrapping up this year.
Okay, great. Yeah, I live in a 150-year-old house, so.
Yeah.
So I get it.
And, and honestly, the priority is want to be making it non-missore any longer. So even if it extends beyond this calendar year, the interior renovation, I think the plumbing, everything needs to be replaced. Everything needs to replace, everything needs to replace. So, so you know, when you get into old buildings like that, it can be a little bit hairy. But the priority is to get the street frontage looking reasonable. Even if it's that, even if there's still work happening.
Yeah, great.
Can I ask you a question, is this a further related question? Does, did the change in the world related to COVID have a change where you might like?
Absolutely, and that's why I totally believe in, in Scottsville, because, yeah, my husband's students in New York. Is that what you're asking?
Well, the reason I, I think there's a lot of people in Scottsville that don't understand that there's a whole different world about to happen. And that different world, you're an example of that world. And that world means Scottsville's in a whole different place in the next couple of years. It's kind of, if you understand what's happened with the sociology of all that's going on, you're just an example of that. And the changes of people who are leaving DC or New York or wherever, this is going to be a very inviting place for people to come. And we need to be wise about that as a town council. And that's why we needed to have the development that we just did and other development in the future, but I'm glad you're coming.
One hundred percent, you know, I just kind of go like, I don't want to waste any of this time. What, what, we, I expected when I told my friends in DC that we were living here, for them to think, oh my gosh, criminals lost their minds, so crazy, okay, like, oh. And instead, people were very envious. And, and I think that there are more and more people like my husband who are no longer tethered to their geographical location. And then when you start to look at where you want to be, you stumble upon in this beautiful small town, again.
Well, like I said, I think you are, you'll be one of a number of people who, and I'm more excited to have you. So thank you for doing this.
Super excited.
Well, you have a floor, Mr. Here, I'd like to thank you for helping to organize the Easter icon. Yourself and Cody Stewart, the new Baptist church pastor, suggested that and took the lead on it, where it hadn't happened in several years. And it, it made my day on Saturday to see that community organized. I, I had, I had very little to do with it and I appreciate that very much.
I'm really welcome. I think every time there's an event in town, people come and buy coffee, right? And you know, I care this summer, the aggregate of all these little things is two bands.
Any other members of the public which speaks in our public hearing?
Well, I, well, I extended an issue. And I've been following the tourist lodging for a while, and I think this is a great thing. And there's a lot of issues to it and I, you know, and I know it's very popular throughout the United States, throughout, throughout a lot of places. And we definitely need that. And I'd like to see if the town leadership lists all those eight places at all, the new ones coming, and have a map on where they are, because I have people come here and they want to know where to stay. And, and you know, the Airbnb site is not the easiest one to navigate. I know a few where they are, I can say, go here, go here. But it'd be good to have that listed and exactly where they are located and, and also maybe the prices. And maybe even a map that we can look at real quickly to find out what they are. But one of the things that the planning commission also mentioned is about the, a policy on that. I know when I was on the, the commission, they have a policy about the Airbnb. I think some, some of them are already built in, where to park and things like that. So I think that policy needs to be, you know, centralized, so people know if they want to be an Airbnb, where can you go, you know, make sure they're following all the criteria. My only concern with, and I don't know about this Airbnb, because I didn't know these Airbnbs, because I don't know exactly where they are. My only concern with Airbnb's in general is, you know, it reduces our population of, of the town. And it also, some of them, some of them are probably doing a great good to fix an awful village that they, they, they take away from rent, to others, long-term rentals. And so maybe that the policy could be that these Airbnb's could also be long-term rentals. Because I think, I think Airbnb's are, you can only live there so many days. But I think we need long-term rentals too. And because the renters, renters in our town are really the lifeblood of our town. And we want to make sure we got plenty of places for them to rent, because they, they're on our town council. Remember Josh and some of them here, they need places to stay too. And they're not going to stay Airbnb, so I want to make sure those are looked at. So maybe the, looking at a policy for Airbnb's, the, the policy could also say that these Airbnb's could be turned into rental, long-term rental properties, so they could stay there. Because that, that helps our population and it helps our, you know, our working class. A lot of these people who work with Karen, all those places, they're not going to be staying at these houses or buying these houses. They're going to be staying at rental properties. So it's just something to think about in the future, you know, to take care of it. And maybe, maybe we could have a flexible policy that they could say at the Airbnb's. And if they, they're going to stay here for a long term, they could work something out where they could have long-term rentals and, you know, and be citizens here, you know, engaged citizens, really part of the community instead of just tourists. I mean, I'm going to leave their money here, which is good, the tourists can do that. But I think that we want the renters to be engaged and doing things in the community.
Thanks, sir. Any other public comments?
George, good one. I live a mile across the river in Buckingham, lifelong resident area. I would like to also say Airbnb world is crazy. Good. Our, our unit that we have, two out of the last four rentals were people that were looking to either locate a business in this area and or to buy. And we have another family coming in July, that's actually going to take a look in this area and try and turn where to buy from that state. So I think it's certainly a serious note that, like Dana said, things are changing. It's phenomenally crazy that that many people travel and do that much right here in this area, but they do.
Nancy Goethe, 130, James Correa, I have an intention of speaking for this. However, this town has lost every single Airbnb that we once had, which really funded our budget. And I'm going to say that the planning commission is already looking into. how many Airbnb units should be in town. And I know that it's come up on your level, Mr. Ward. So I'm going to say that I find both the planning commission and you being actually impressive in how to identify the number of units, the Airbnb versus apartment rentals in town. And I commend both of you for taking on that mission.
Thanks.
Can I make one more statement?
Yes, sir.
Uh, note, Buckingham County just finally realized that Airbnb, VROB, any of the other associates, they were collecting the taxes that were due to the local areas, but they were not getting it. The town needs to stick their hand out and make sure that they get what is running coming through them.
Any other comments?
Just have a few things. I don't think anyone was suggesting that they're buying. It's a positive thing. What has come up is the last time we had an Airbnb in town, so that they needed long-term housing, they turned down, June, six months, was applying to the town, neither Airbnb, that was turned down. There was a suggestion that because his property's good shape, it's good in the long term, so he should not be allowed to potentially Airbnb. And then because these properties have been collected, not by, uh, our methods at all, but by previous landlords, that they should be allowed to do it. There has been debate, um, with planning board, um, definitely with architecture review board, but also with town council, as to what exactly does Airbnb contribute to town council coming to the town? And we know the only numbers we've gotten back was that five out of the, we've got eight in the town, I think, and like more, three in the middle, five in the long. We haven't gotten the numbers of what kind of extent occupants are, what kind of taxes do we receive, do we receive any at all? How much money is the five, um, licenses bringing into the town? This is something all of you guys have asked over and over again. We still don't have those membership, we're making decisions on Airbnb. And it was decided that we need long-term, so we can turn it down. So what I did find being reported, and Ron, you were there, and Stan, you're on, too. The planning board approved both Airbnb's. Planning board was puzzled why, when we approved the Airbnb, why coal risk was turned down. Then they had really quite active conversations about, well, if we're going to turn down one, how do we approve the other? And that hasn't been important to the town council. So I, I just want to put that out there, the planning board is saying we need consistent. We shouldn't be appearing through favoritism or not. Um, and we should have consistent rules. We're not ready for that. We're not ready for that. In the past, Corey's, um, special use permit was pushed off. And pushed off, and one of the reasons it was pushed off was because the staff admitted they didn't do the due diligence, and one of the things they didn't do was post a sign. I didn't know, because normally agenda wasn't under, um, website, um, that would be here, and I didn't know your public here was there. Because it wasn't published properly. And we postponed that last time, because we didn't do our due diligence and we violated the limits. So I think that's something we need to be consistent about. And we follow the rules, you know, it's a very project, I don't think anyone's known. But then what is the town's stance on Airbnb, now we're going to be consistent or not? Do we care? Did the proper public communication or not, et cetera? So these are things that we can actually choose, and that is all part of this, unfortunately.
Thanks, sir. Any other public comments? Public theory, or turn it over to the council for discussion?
Do you have to make a motion? I think, I think we do.
Please make a motion first. Uh, Robert Scholes, yeah, okay.
I move that we approve the ability for these Airbnb's to happen at these two locations.
Second.
Do we have room for discussion? Okay, I, I don't know, all the way back, Matt's still here, you take him?
Yeah.
Okay, cool, careful. Uh, the, the last application we had, um, for an Airbnb, uh, you referred to Corey, I believe he was the applicant. And how many, how many units was that?
One unit.
One unit, oh, uh, at top of the old tavern building, the older, the old tavern building, okay? And that had previously been rented out for a number of months or years? Is that right?
It was a long term, and then the lease was up, and chose not to, um, the person moved out, and so he chose not to, he, he chose to pursue the town to ask for special use. He also has another rental moved in there, and the woman who was living there was going to work for time into Airbnb.
Okay, so then one apartment, one available to the public for Airbnb. Okay, and that's, that's what I thought when I voted against it. And the reason I voted against that one was because, um, I hated, and by the way, there was no input from the public. Uh, no discussion at that time. I had not talked with anyone. Therefore, I felt like I had to make a decision since we were voting on it. Um, and I hated to see rental use lost. So, um, Bill, I see where you're coming from, Matt. I understand, you know, what you're talking about, but that's the reason I voted against that one. In this case, there are two, you know, where you said three, um, units will be available as Airbnb, they're going to be renovated, they're not, uh, suitable for a rental unit as they stand right now. Is that what you would say, applicant?
It would, that nobody should have it in its current state.
Okay, all right. So, um, it's a difference, uh, at the way I'm looking at this. I just want to make that understood. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I want to sort of chime in, because, um, I've been giving Airbnb's a lot of thoughts since, I guess now it's two of them. But, you know, when I voted against that one, yeah, I was, I'm interested, one of my, are we losing long-term permanent residences, right, existing long-term residents? Um, would the location be suitable for residential use, right? Um, how does the Airbnb fit into the overall business plan of the property? And so here we're not losing an existing residential use. Um, we know we still need transient lodging, so we're getting that. We know that, especially in the case of the telephone exchange building, no one's going to live in that for very long, by losing your mind. Be a great Airbnb for the weekend, which I can stay there for a year. Um, and we've got a really good air plan for how this, this, not only the Airbnb, but this also a business model that's integrated with the rehabilitation of a significant historical structure tool, um, and another operating business within it. So it's a pretty dynamic application, I think, which is why I'm supportive of this. But, um, Mr. Holt's point, I decided to think the planning commission and council needs to be in lockstep on these things. And I think the criteria, I don't know if we can have a policy so much, but I think a criteria based on our priorities and what we're looking for in Airbnb's would be good for us to have a joint session maybe with planning commission about to talk through some of these issues, so that they, that's best when our committees work together, right? So that they approve something, we approve it, we don't approve, we don't have to worry about it. Um, so that we are on the same point about it, and so that our thinking is clear between the two bodies. But I think one thing I was going to say to, to speak specifically to your situation, which I totally favor, um, just to, just to give you a little bit of history, when I was on the economic development committee, let's say about five, five ago. Brian LaFon Hay did some significant research. We looked at how, how did we bring the town to the area, like, what would that be involved, how do we do that? And Airbnb's came about. I philosophically do not think it's the role of the town to limit them, so I take a different position than most people on council, and I voted in support of the one. I think I was one of the voters who voted for it, uh, on that particular vote. So I don't think we should view this any differently. I think we should have supported the other one, which I did, and I think we should support this one. But that being said, it is true, we have to balance housing for people in terms of ownership. We just did add housing to the town. We need to balance rental property and we need to balance lodging for people who are going to stay on short-term basis. And all of them are important, but I think it's, we have to be really careful because market forces, I mean, I'm a Republican, so I believe market values and market forces are not things that I want to control in terms of what we should do as government. I think the forces themselves are important and they should have influence. So, so from my view, I don't like that we voted no for the other one. I think that was a mistake. And I do think in the future, as a, as a council, as we do, I think what you're hearing from the, the councils here who vote differently, is we do need to look at it in more depth. I think that's true, you know, we haven't taken the time to look at it in detail. But, but that being said, this particular situation is taking something we all agree, a building that's not a use, we're going to allow it to be useful now and, and the business will come about. And again, I think the other applicants has a reason to bribe us not having passed it before. And I think we did make a mistake in what we did in that area. But again, we all have different votes, we all have different opinions. I think what you hear in the council that I respect about these councilors here, there is a sense where we need to figure out what is the overall plan, how are we going to come up with this right balance? Part of that balance was we just figured out how to add more housing. And one of the things that we have to also understand is we can't control the other market forces. Right now, the reason we have, I don't know what's, what's the right number to you, how many, how many cars come from Buckingham every day, the drives from Scottsville? Is it seven thousand, eight thousand?
The last, the last, um, surveys, I think B dot did it, and it's been probably two years ago, uh, eight thousand cars per day.
And it's, and it's not very complicated economics, because when you look at the, the cost of living over there is dramatically different than here. And we're not going to change that significantly whether we do rentals, Airbnb's, or houses. What we are going to change is the opportunity for people to live in Scottsville, and that is something we need to think about. But the, the bigger forces of where people are going to live, if you want us to spend thousands of dollars, they're going to be over there for a long time. And so with all that to say, excited that you're here, fully supportive of you doing, the other people in town brought up some other issues that we do need to address in another time, but excited to have you down.
Any other? Eric.
Did you say Meredith?
I said Meredith.
Okay, I just, you know, I feel like we are kind of reiterating what we talked about at the last meeting when the other one was voted down. But just to add my two cents again, because being very visible at Bane's all the time, I have been getting a lot of, uh, backlash from my no vote on it. As a, and I get, you know, Buckingham and everything else, as a non-driver, um, it took me over a year to find an apartment in downtown Scottsville. I have to be in downtown Scottsville. Both my jobs have to be walking distance. Um, so again, I just reiterating points that have been made. When you talk about housing, I'm not, you know, going to be one of the ones buying the four hundred thousand dollar homes on Bird Street. I'm going to be, you know, looking for a one or two-bedroom rental. When that is so scarce in downtown, and we have good rentals that are right here downtown, th- that's my view on it. Again, I, you know, like, if I could see the numbers of these eight that we have downtown, how full they are and everything else, it might be a different story. But, you know, I still don't know what the capacity is at those. Are they, are they full every day? Are they full two days a month? You know, a, th- there's a lot that needs to go into deciding if we're going to turn a good feasible apartment into an Airbnb as opposed to something like this. Like you said, nobody's going to live in the, i- in the switch for very long without going crazy. But it would be a great weekend getaway. There are, there are reasons why some are being approved and aren't as far as my votes go. Um, and it has nothing to do with favoritism or bias or any of the other things that keep seeming to come up from people who aren't at the meetings and hearing these explanations when we have the votes. So, yeah, just kind of wanted to reiterate that point.
Okay, thanks very much. Um.
Yeah, um, so traditionally, I think this was a station, I've lived in before, so I want to make sure that, like everyone said already, create some rules. Now, I don't think you should be going to council decide on a case-by-case basis what people do with their property. And if they don't want to shoot business, we should decide if that's okay or not, okay. And do you put a cap on it if you like? I think that's fine, or just put out some standard rules and, you know, criteria. And so it's not every single time we bore us, I think people have a general idea of if they will be pursued or not.
Wow, I just want to follow up on what you said. Alex, that's a good point. I mean, the, the point of trying to figure out how do we come up with a, an understanding, and how do we make sure that it's consistent? I think everybody wants that, we're just staying in different places.
Well, I hated voting against the last applicant. I really do, and I've thought about it a lot. Um, but still, I, I did. I don't know if anybody's ever lived over the top of a beauty shop. I have, and that's an old building. And I guarantee you, I could be in there, you know, cooking up a storm, and I'd be smelling, you know, a die from downstairs. I'll promise you, especially, you know, two hundred year old building. But I don't believe the applicant, uh, the evening applicant has any intention of directing this toward Meredith, of making, uh, those, uh, apartments that be available for rentals. It's really this or nothing, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so there we go.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 that's fully in for, yeah, what, what we're doing now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But that's, you know, that's where we're going with this. And, uh, on a, on a personal note, and I'll leave it alone, but I, the little brick house next door, I spent the first five years of my life in. And then when I got old enough to drink, I says, well, shoot, why don't I just go ahead and sell it? So I worked in an ABC store next door. So I, I've been on both sides of the building, and it has not changed a bit in my seventy years. I'd like to see it look, you know, especially since it's just about the first uh, building, the style of residence when you come into town that way. So thank you for your efforts. Thank you. That's all.
Any other comments?
Yeah, um, we have zoning in town that says what you can and you can't do in, within those zones. And what we're, what we're looking at here is a special use permit, so a request for an exception. I voted against the special use permit for the last, um, Airbnb, because I think when we make an exception to the zone, we have to take a look primarily at what's um, best for the town. Um, and I think keeping a rental in town rather than changing it to a bed and breakfast is in the town's best interest, because it gives the town another resident to live here. Um, in this case, we have buildings that are not being used for anything. There are no plans for anybody else interested in turning these into rentals. And, um, we have an opportunity to rehab the building, put in a viable business, um, and possibly increase traffic into Scottsville, all of which are going to be a benefit for the town. So I don't see any advantage to, uh, to voting against this or denying it. And I don't see any, um, favoritism or, or anything else in voting against one and for this one. So, um, I think we, as I said, we have to look at what's best for the town. And I think in both cases, we've done that, or previously have done that, and it sounds like we're going to do that again, so.
Anything else?
I might point briefly to, to zoning, and Mr. Ritzko, at risk of making your motion harder than it needs to be. I might point briefly to, to zoning and Mr. Grisco, at risk of making your motion harder than it needs to be. Um, you, as you, you spoke to the property rights, um, issue. And we have these listed uses in our zoning for uses that require special use permits, um, so the, the action item is related to. This M eight tourist lodgings, that's the application, and we talked about how some of these properties do convert between, um. Year round tenants and the short term rentals, if, if you, if you wanted to provide that flexibility to move back and forth. Um, you could allow both number five and number eight. And then there wouldn't need to be another special use permit in the future if the applicant changed their mind and wanted to take a, a year long tenant. Um, that would, that would be a way of increasing the future property rights, um, you can, you can grant more than what they applied for if you choose to.
I, I would say, given what I've already stated, I, I would feel totally comfortable giving both choices.
Okay, just to let you know what options you have.
It always makes sense, it just means that they have more options and, now that might be. Less favorable to some of the council, but from my perspective, I think.
Yeah.
I want to give them their ability to make their own choices at business operations, so yes, I, I would.
It's, it's your motion if you get a minute.
I, I would add five and eight, is that, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
But that's, that's what I heard, sir, and apologies for interjecting.
We want to be accurate and that is going to make the law a little more robust conversation, but yes, so I would suggest five and eight.
Number, number eight is the tourist lodgings and number five is a standard apartment rental.
So what we're, what the motion is to include both of those in the special use permit.
So that could go either way.
It could go either way.
She's asking for an Airbnb, which is under, under number eight. And what, uh, what we're suggesting is it could be both. That also could satisfy some of the citizens all the time, people deliver it two different ways.
So you could amend your, revise yours.
What happens if the, if the nature of the business changes? Uh, are we passing a special use because a certain type of business is going to be there? And if that doesn't work out, we'll do something, the owner could do something else next year, another totally different business.
It could, I, I think.
And that's allowed, as long as we just say business.
Well, that goes back to what he said, if there's these two, two. Uses that he's just identified that are. What we're including in the special use.
So are we adding these uses on top of the, it's, it's the, the existing zoning or are we just saying you can only put these kinds of businesses in this building?
The current zoning is commercial, and so all of the commercial uses are by right, and those mostly speak to retail offices, those business uses.
And those are retained.
Right, those are.
In addition to, okay.
Those are always there, so all of the property, now this whole site, any of the rooms in it can always be used for lawyers' offices. Flower shops, toy stores, any, any business, the residential uses require more scrutiny, and so the application is for the tourist lodgings.
Okay.
And then if, if you were interested in maximizing that, you could allow the apartment rental as well.
The other thing I would say, going back to the council here, if I don't want to complicate this, we're, she's asking for eight. I'm suggesting, I'm okay with eight and five, you might just want eight, you know, in other words, I'm, I'm happy to go with whatever the easiest. Cause we're still in the bigger picture, we're trying to figure out in the longer run, other cases, I just, we just want to answer thirty questions tonight.
Yeah, I mean, the town needs both, we need transient lodging and we need long term rentals, so let's enable both of these and. In, within this, and then you can decide going forward which one you think makes most sense and you can make the most money doing it.
Yes, they, they recommended just the one thing, but if you want to, your, your options are to approve the recommendation, reject their recommendation, or modify it in some way.
Well, would that be beneficial to the applicant?
Sure. I, I have to say on a practical level, like if you, if you had an Airbnb that wasn't renting, it's an Airbnb. And somebody, if you conceivably priced it at such a rate, somebody can rent it for a year, and so, so I, I. From, from my, my perspective, nah, whatever, I don't care so much, I, I, I do think conceptually. In my mind and in the branding on this sort of, um, and you know, in my mind, this is a kind of a mini hotel, um. More than a Airbnb, but, you know, it'll have to get rented on those platforms, we decided is our contemporary society's mechanism for renting small, small businesses back here.
In this position, it wouldn't be to change your use of what you want to do, obviously, I think it's just to allow that property additional flexibility.
Hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
So could I have the court read the, uh, motion that's been voted down? Somebody read the motion.
Some officials first.
Okay.
Do you have a second?
Um, so, I would read the whole motion, sorry, connection's.
Yeah, the whole motion, sir.
So the motion would be on the special use permit for tourist lodging seven four. Four seventy-four and nine, four ninety-six Valley Street with an amendment to, uh. To include zoning that is, and Mr. Lawless, could you help me with that one?
Um, both section M four and section and, and eight, both tourist lodgings and apartment rentals.
And has there been a seconding on that amendment?
I'll second that. Yep, I second on the amendment, yeah.
And then I could, no.
In the process of getting the closing documents together, it came to my attention the address of the building is actually four seventy-four slash four seventy-six. And four ninety-six. If, if the address could just be corrected, I would.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Because for, for some reason, that one building has two addresses, this just came to my attention in the process of getting the closing documents together.
I was wondering how to be decided on a dollar and block four.
We do it everywhere.
Sure, so that they match up on one another.
Yes.
Okay, does everybody understand what we're on?
Yes.
Mr. Cork, would you call over?
Yes, sir, Mr. Basset?
Yes.
Grisco?
Yes.
Uh, Bullock?
Yes.
Yes.
Mudson?
Yes.
And Payne?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passed.
Thank you, thank you.
Now, with that being done, our friends on East Main can recede this, my special use of this, and include both of these, both of these possibilities, could we?
Indeed, if, if anything, circumstances changes and they'd like to reapply with some different argument, they're.
Yeah.
Warm up.
All right, moving on.
Would he be notified that, would, would the last applicant be notified that he could do that?
Well, I'm sure somebody in here is going to tell him.
Well.
Uh, moving on to six B, zoning text on our home based businesses, would you tell us what this has all about, Mr. Lawless?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you, um, planning commission worked on this for a couple of months and we held it over, um, from a March meeting because of the busy agenda last month. Um, planning commission worked on this, uh, December, uh, January and February. The town's home based business regulations allow for two kinds of home businesses. We have basically small ones, uh, class A that are just yourself with a home office, where there's. Nothing that shows out on the front of the building that there is any kind of business, maybe a home office, uh, architect. And they work on designs and they send files and there's no traffic or impact to speak of. Those are by right in all residential zones, anybody with a home can do that kind of business out of their house. You get their business license, everything's fine, we have several of those. There's one that's a little bit larger, the class B home occupation, where there is a little bit of impact on the neighborhood. Maybe a little bit of traffic from customers, a shingle hung out, one or two employees, those require special use permits in, um. All of our residential zones, um, a, a good example is someone doing, um, uh, haircuts or, um. Physical therapy or massage out of their home, clients come in, there's a little bit of traffic, it's not just a home, so those need special use permits. We've had some interest, uh, from. Uh, new folks in town whose businesses look like they might grow a little bit larger than what our current limits on those are. Currently, the limit on that larger home based business is two employees and fifteen hundred square feet. Once you get bigger than that, it stops being a home business and we say, nope, can't do anymore, you need to get yourself a storefront. Um, planning commission heard, um, interesting business ideas from folks who have businesses that are a little bit larger than that. Three and four employees up towards three thousand square feet of business space, where they might use a barn in the rural area. Um, and planning commission thought that was persuasive that these home based businesses should be allowed to grow a little bit larger. Of course, the special use permit control is still there, so if it were something, uh, um. An auto body shop that was too much noise from the grinders, if that, if that seemed like an inappropriate home business for a neighborhood. You simply reject the special use permit, so it's a case by case review based on what kind of business it is. So planning commission brings forward a reform to our home business rules. Where the special use permit is still allowed, but the number of employees goes up and the square footage goes up slightly.
Okay.
So that's what they conveyed to town council for consideration, here it's first reading, we can discuss it further and move it up for its public hearing in action next month, if you see fit.
For a discussion, or at this time.
Particularly, it does seem as if there's a, the other conversation we had about sort of like small growth and sort of like other, you know, potential for business or residents, whatever in town. Uh, I am curious though, where the business, the business that brought this forward, where are they currently located in the town?
Sure, sir.
I guess I'm asking, trying to get a sense for what kind of. Where a three thousand square foot business with, up to let's say five employees might be located.
Yep, so the property in question is here, um, on Popple Spring, a farm, small farm property. Where there's a house and a barn, which looks like it has a footprint a little bit bigger than the house itself. I think there had been livestock and tractors and things in this from the previous owner, and the, um, the new owners described their business, this is not a secret. Um, uh, Ms. Carrigan is a, um, orthopedic doctor, and she has, um, invented a shoe, which, uh. Especially for, um, women's, uh, feet and, and knees reduces pain, and they have a shop with three D printers where they make the shoes. And she has a couple of employees, uh, the bottoms of them are three D printed and the tops are, um, embroidered, the piecework is out, it's pieced out to, um. Refugee communities and they embroider the tops and some of them in attachment, so her proposal is to put about a dozen three D printers in this building. And make the shoes, and it requires a bit more than fifteen hundred square feet, and she has four employees. And would like to do this business at this site, and that's, um, illegal, uh, because it's too large under our current regulations.
Any other comments?
What about, with that manufacturing. Hate to be so petty and picky, violating its noise ordinances, and I want to what the neighbors think.
Uh, it's a good question, the, the dozen, the dozen three D printers, um, they had them running on a Zoom call with us when they described their work at planning commission. And you could hear them clearly on the audio with all the printers running in the background, let's say one. One weed whacker is much noisier than these dozen printers.
Okay.
Other comments? No, I, I think it's what brings to the public hearing, the discussion, work session, you know, for sure.
Yep.
I think it's a good opportunity there for us to think about.
I hear a motion to have a public hearing on this matter on three sixteen, so, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Uh, then I'll be, uh. What you? Have a public hearing on that next month if you desire, but of course, uh, so what Mr. Lawless has to say to this.
Okay. With, um, with thanks to Government Services for their, um, work on the forecasting part of this since November and to town council for. Um, close reading on this over the past couple of work sessions, um, council responded and gave feedback on the staff recommended budget over the past two months. And the large printout before you, uh, react to that and, uh, answers a few questions ready for proposal, so the, the sequence. Um, would be to, um, advertise your proposal for public hearing. Next month and potential action, uh, in May or June, but required before June thirtieth, which is when our fiscal year ends. Um, the state budget law is such that a budget needs to be advertised with maximum spending and maximum tax rates. Town council can adopt something smaller than that in the future based on public feedback, but can adopt a budget or tax rates higher than what are advertised. Um, so this sets a, a baseline for conversation. Um, the town has had, um, good success with grant funding, some special projects, and those revenues and spending show in this budget. So the, the revenue and spending lines are larger than what we've seen in the past, but that's, um, one time and short term. So some of what government services have been studying is, we take the grant funding away and look at what's happening structurally. Making sure that our house is in order, um, absent the grants, because we, we don't want to rely on those forever. Um, and that's where we start to raise the windbells in the future, that, um, the cost of a lot of our work has gone up. And that reflects excellent quality work, things like, um, Chief Jenkins, um, body one cameras, uh, buying new vehicles, fully equipping them. Um, compensating officers well and paying for good benefits, the price of all of those things has gone up. And we have not seen the growth in our basic business taxes to keep up, so we see a long term problem. And I think Government Services Committee was wise to raise that and, uh, recommend action on it, um, before we start to see it hit to our tax balances. Um, so this, this budget shows, um. I want to show the, the change in here, because these are some.
Yeah.
Large numbers that need attention, um. There is this significant drop, this is cash flow on grant projects and also, um. Correcting the balance of payments issue with the county, um, we had a coding error on those courthouse fines. Um, a fix proposed on that is the town repaying the error. And then the county making a contribution back, not quite as large, but enough to cover, um, three quarters of our match on our bird street sidewalk program. So, so, and real clear about the numbers, this shows the town paying back to the county, one hundred and ten thousand dollars of courthouse error.
Yeah.
And the county paying back to the town, sixty thousand dollars to help with the sidewalk construction.
Okay.
Not equal, but better than it would be if all we were doing is refunding those things.
Yeah.
That is where part of this deficit comes from, the other part of it just relates to the timing on grant projects. We will be doing some grant work for flood control and economic development, where the work is done over the summer. And we'll pay contractors in May and June and get reimbursement in July and August, so that's why there's this big swing from one year to the other. The grant work, of course, offsets, we, we pay and then debt paid back. And the deficit here is that difference that I've described between, we pay the county a large amount and they pay us back a little bit smaller amount. So this is neutral after two years.
Okay.
Um, that said, council's discussion on tax rates relating to, what are we going to do about this long term? Question one, around our costs are increasing, our business revenues seem not to be. Council had a question about can the cigarette tax go higher, um, the answer is no, this is tapped in state law at forty cents, that's as high as we can go. Um, milk tax can be high, this budget shows that increase. Um, this rate six percent matches abnormal town, it remains a little bit lower than Charlottesville. Six percent is less than Farnville, which is a seven, it's less than Appomattox, which is a eight.
Wow.
Um, so I, I, I don't think we're putting undue hardship on our restaurants or their customers with these rates.
And is that, we would have to approve that tax rate?
Yes, your, your current rate is four and a half.
Okay, so is that something we need to do before the end of this fiscal? Okay, so is that something we need to do before the end of this fiscal year? Before this budget goes into effect? Or is that, because if it doesn't, then it affects all of your resting calculations, correct?
Big part.
So yours, your, this budget is based on the assumption that we're going to increase the tax rate to six percent?
Yes.
Okay, now if we don't do that before the end of the fiscal year, then you're not gonna have the same, the revenue numbers in this budget are gonna be incorrect.
So that's right, so the rate would, the rate would change effective July first.
Okay.
So the um the bill, the the check that a restaurant pays in August on their July sales would would show the increased rate.
Okay.
If if council kept the current four and a half percent rate, um I would revise these budget numbers down.
Right, okay.
Um and your your question, although our tax rate is, what spending adjustments do you want to make as well?
Right, okay.
Matt, we refer to it as meals tax um is, you know, having sidewalk discussion earlier. Is that the same as in food beverage tax?
Um food, uh food and beverage, yes, um sales tax and grocery tax, no.
Yeah.
So um your
In other words, like, you know, we have restaurants that serve food because we've got the brewery that serves a beverage, so they would be taxed also.
Yes, yes, the um the prepared food and the drink are taxed the same.
So that's basically, you know, a meal tax.
Yes, um I happen to have a Charlottesville receipt in my body. Um and it it has the sales and meals tax line on it, which totals a little bit, it's a it's eleven point three percent, which is the the city tax of six plus a state tax of five point three. So Ri- Richmond gets that five point three, whatever the local tax rate is. And then the city, county or town tax is on top of that.
And also, you know, having the discussion that uh this uh meals tax, Admiral County is gonna be discussing that Wednesday at their board supervisor's meeting. Meals tax, uh lodging tax and uh five percent bag tax that does affect Scottsville.
Five cent.
Fasted bag tax, um so that that will affect Scottsville with the five cent you'd be spending if you don't carry your own bag.
That there are some different interactions in the state law about which which taxes stack one on top of another and which ones replace. The town mostly uses those replacing taxes where we have our own authority and anywhere else in the county has a different rate, but we have ours. Um so um with this six percent, the the burger at um the tavern is taxed at the same rate as a burger at McDonald's on campus. Um if the town's tax doesn't make it more expensive than it would be otherwise.
So there's no way to get a portion of that bag tax. In other words, we got one of the most profitable food lines in the region according to one of their managers.
Yes.
That's a lot of money to want to have in all counting. Of course, a lot, we have a lot of people from multiple candidates shot there too, but we can't say, give us a cut.
No, that's right, the the way the the way the new state law was written on plastic bags, only counties have that authority. And I sent a nice note, as did several other towns of, we would please like that taxing authority. And the general assembly didn't listen to us, but um so when you if if the county passes that and you go to the food line and you pay the five cent bag tax, the county government gets that five cents and the town does not.
Or you can get a paper bag and you won't pay the five cents.
So actually, the paper bag should be ten.
Are they really? Oh wow. So just so I'm clear, Matt, if I go to the food line and I buy a can of beans and and some chicken wings, I pay prepared food tax on the chicken wings, but not the canned beans.
Precisely, the um and front foot ferments is the same way. Where their um inventory knows the difference between a can of beans and a deli sandwich.
Yeah.
And the deli sandwich is taxed higher than the canned.
Okay.
And just so I, because this is the exact in my notes, so just just to refer my notes to um if you don't do the tax increase, maybe we have to cut sixty thousand dollars from somewhere, right?
The revenue generated by all the tax changes is about sixty thousand.
Yes, but we don't take a change, you gotta cut sixty thousand. And then you also said that that was equivalent to like, I wrote down nine percent increase in real estate tax. Done.
Thereabouts, yes.
Okay. The nine percent increase. How many percent of yours?
You had some questions about how real estate tax implementation would look and I've learned a little bit more about that. Is that useful to talk about this evening or not? We have the question to Admiral County's government of if the town restored a real estate tax, how would that work administratively? Because the town hasn't done that since the early nineties. Um so they ran that question around and talked about both startup costs and running costs. If we wanted to work with Admiral County to take care of this for us and then send us the money. Um they have a pretty cumbersome computer system through their assessor's office that looks at all of the bills, prepares the bills and then ties in with the court system on tax liens and delinquency. It's a, it's a nasty piece of software. And they said that their their contractor's price for patching it in the way that we need would cost us thirty thousand dollars. So that's the the price of admission to start playing the real estate tax game.
Right.
And then they would want to add one half of a position to their assessor's office to run the town real estate tax for us at a cost of twenty four thousand dollars a year. And we follow all of their policies. Um so that feels like a pretty expensive way to run a tax. If we didn't do that, we would need to hire enough ourselves um and add that to our um bookkeeping workload. Um we get the, we get the assessor's file of the property values, we put the billings together, send out the bills. Most people pay on time and then we pursue enforcement and liens and delinquency if they don't. I I think we do that for Yes, sorry.
Would that require another employee, do you think?
Yes, um I that that would be, it would be harder than any tax administration that we're doing now. Um and so the the metaphor in finance class is leaky bucket. When you're, when you're trying to scoop up an amount of revenue, how much leaks out? Because administering it is cumbersome, some people don't pay, some things you fail to collect. Real estate tax feels like a pretty leaky bucket compared to meals tax.
Alright.
Yeah, the restaurants pay on time, we haven't had an enforcement case in years. It works well and it's not administratively difficult for us.
Um yeah, I feel like the real estate tax question came up a couple work sessions back as a way to not do the meals tax, but such a big jump, but it it sounds like it really doesn't make all that much sense. Especially keeping in line with the rest of the area.
So to increase our meals tax from four and a half percent to six percent, we would have to hold public hearings and then pass that motion in council, is that correct?
Yes.
Do we have time to do that before the end of this fiscal year?
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay.
We just do that, we just do that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
You you take time.
Okay.
And um a couple council members who haven't done this before, your your budget adoption is a pair of votes. Um one approves in ordinance for all of the tax rates, that's the law that says if you do this business, you must pay this tax. And then the other vote is on the budget instructing staff to take the money that is gathered by the taxes and spend it in this way.
Okay.
And so that could happen at the May or June meetings.
Okay. I wasn't sure if that was a separate parallel process.
Okay.
Um Matt, you know offhand, the first uh six items on the B ball have a thirty dollar minimum. And that's all I've ever paid is a million, thirty dollars. You know how much those thirty dollar minimums add up to during the, which is the year, how many businesses are there just to know?
Ooh, um Mr. Wallace, you have looked at this list more recently than I have. Off offhand, we do about eighty of these, how many of the eighty would you say are thirty dollar payments?
Thirty dollar, uh not being at my computer, I would say maybe a quarter. We had some new businesses this year also. Uh when people, um I would say a quarter, I don't want to be totally on record, but I could easily bring you something.
The only thing I'm asking is that it would not, I pay thirty dollars a year, it's not, it's not feeling, it's fifty dollars. Twenty thirty dollars in order, I mean. So uh I I was just wondering how much raising that minimum to fifty dollars would uh
What would you think of having a specific quilter's tax?
Yeah, I swear.
I I should guess.
How large are the square reach?
Yeah, but I think what, but I do think it would be interesting for a work session to see that number. So what do those minimums add up to for each of those line items at thirty dollars? Does that make sense?
My hun- my hunch is trivial, the the largest taxes that we get, you 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 know which are the biggest business impact in town. And and they're paying five, ten, twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Um the the thirty dollar ones as a slice of the pie are a lot.
Yeah.
And that came up too, we're talking about like the fee for permits. Just like just submit a COA to the ARP or to the playing, playing commission. Talking about raising those rates, but I also think we could, just bad enough because it's worth the staff time or whatever, you know, um but in terms of funding the town will not make the difference for
Covering our costs, like the price of newspaper advertising is going up, so covering our costs might make sense, but you're right, it's not, it's not a budget breaker.
But covering our costs might still be
Logical.
Good to do, so is there a way for us to like figure that out, like what number we could get to cover costs for those sorts of things?
This um this budget shows that on um the permit fees line.
Yeah.
Um I'm I'm expecting an increase in the next year. Um not because I'm expecting to get a ton of applications, although we might. Um I don't have the answer on those permit fee increases, but I want to study those and and I'm forecasting some of the permit fees to the law.
So I I obviously have not looked at the revised version, but the previous one I went through line by line and the only, the only thing that I saw that uh that concerned me um was the sixty thousand dollars for the for the sidewalk. Um and I was, I so I think now that we're gonna get that money back from the the county, you know, that that's that uh kind of addresses my own that concern.
Okay.
Um but I think it does make sense to raise taxes. Um particularly even meal tax, because that's a lot outside people are paying this. Um and I don't believe that I have ever heard or seen anybody in any restaurant stand up and walk out because they have had this sales tax on the meal tax or the meal tax was to uh absorb dividends. Um so I don't think people even know, think about that when they go in and eat. Um so that to me feels like it's it's a brainer and and I advocated for a higher increase in the last round anyway. Um we increased it slightly and we haven't heard any of the businesses complain about it.
I've already talked to the Lord's Restaurant in Scottsville and they're already complaining.
Well, yeah.
It was brought up in a conversation I was having, not representing the town, by the way, but he knew I was, so and you were guessing, and it's not, you know, that's a business expense. It gets passed on to the consumer.
Yeah.
Um and at eight point nine percent, you know, uh inflation rate now and the cost of everything going up. Uh it's it's just a, you know, of course, inflation is a hidden tax anyway. Uh the consumer's getting bombarded and um I actually like to find some ways other than raising taxes um to cover the deficit.
Soon.
Because because the restaurant owner says, you look at the bottom of the bill when they sign, they say, my God, this is, you know, this much money. And some of them might take the time to to lift the this sales tax rate and the meal tax rate, so I know I don't uh just for as comparison, a lot of people don't, they just look at the bottom line and say, golly, it's kind of expensive, maybe we won't go out as much. My wife goes to the, she looks at the menu, she goes home and cooks it next week, you know, she doesn't do it.
Yeah.
Well, one way to to uh think about this, uh is if we're getting that um sixty thousand dollars back from the county, that makes up for the difference of not raising taxes this year, does it not?
This year, yep.
Right, so it sounds like, so if we're getting that money from the county, we we could, I I don't, it's a long-term solution, but we could maybe move with tax rates as they are currently without taking a hit.
We're we're very, we're very solvent and have um a good portion of one year's budget in the bank. Uh so it's certainly not an emergency and I I'm not trying to ring a alarm bell, so it's a long-term problem, not a now problem. We're we're making payroll just fine.
Yeah, now now to to that point though, if we didn't raise any tax for this year, we we might the next year, you know, so I don't think it's something that we can pledge indefinitely. I'd also be curious to know what um if we did decide to raise one of these. So if we raise, let's say, just, I guess I'm interested, what if, what would the raise in meals tax be? What would the raise in the transit occupancy tax meal?
The meals is much bigger.
Yeah.
Um and you can see kind of the impact of that in these lines. Meals tax is our biggest revenue line. Um and the rate increase pops this up from one hundred and sixty to two hundred and forty is my, is my estimate. Very significant. The lodging tax is a lot smaller. Um I'm thinking we'll hit two thousand dollars this year and increasing the rate plus welcoming new new uses, I think this will get up as far as eight thousand, but it's very small compared to the meals tax.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Um the meals tax base is just so much bigger.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Um I I hope our, I hope our mini hotels do much better than this.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Mr. Mayor, I know it's not public, never, public, I have to mind, I didn't know. But one thing about meals tax is that I think if you got right down to it, most of the people that eat food in Scottsville don't live in Scottsville.
Mm-hmm.
So why not let the outsiders
Yep.
pay the higher tax and the local people just have to face it once in a while when they go out.
Yep.
I I eat all kinds of food.
Well, you're rich, you can afford it.
Yeah, man, I don't know. You're a high school teenager.
Yes.
But we're just, you know, these figures are based on uh estimates of the taxes that will be paid. And uh I just wonder, you know, with the, for example, the change of ownership of Luppins, are are they doing as well as Luppins did? Um how is the the um tiger fuel, once they get up and going, it may not be this year, but next year, has, you know, they're really um their market area is very profitable in other areas, has that gonna affect subway? And and are they doing any good now? And we have lost a loving oven unless someone buys that.
That's right.
So we're looking at figures here that we're not really sure about.
And it's and it's pretty erratic. Um we we see the change when when a bill comes in and a restaurant has been closed for a week because of vacation. Javier and I see that. Um and when they all closed for two months at the beginning of pandemic, it was scary. Um and and we know it was scary for them, but it was scary, it was scary for our bottom line as well. Um these numbers are volatile and a couple of restaurants coming and going, changing hands, closing for renovations, that does affect our budget.
Yeah.
So the part of, part of council's debate of weighing meals tax versus real estate is meals tax, that load is spread among about a dozen businesses and a few of those are big and a few of them are small. Real estate tax is spread among three hundred properties. So it's a firmer foundation, yeah.
Yeah, I guess the last comment always is even though, in part of effective maintenance, is you know, do we have enough money to do the things we need to do in the town to make it a attractive place to live and to achieve our goals, you know, so are we moving forward on the riverfront project? Do we have the money to fix the boats and canal basins square? Do we have the money to keep our plantings and our trees in good shape? And so for me, I think probably for our next work session, that's kind of what I wanna keep the conversation like. And so for me, I can probably for our next work session, that's kind of what I want to keep the conversation like, do we have the money to do those things? And keep our staff paid and supported? And if we can do that, that's the, those are the numbers we have. That's, yeah.
Short answer is I believe so. And and I built the spending part of this budget with those service levels and project ideas in mind. And then went over to what revenue is needed to make those things happen.
You got it.
Yeah.
Other comments or questions? Unless I ask Mr. Wallace if he has any other staff reporting or Javier.
A a bigger part, we we do need, we need action on the budget to advertise. Spending spending and tax rate levels, either as shown or as or as some about some different levels.
Right, I move that we have a public hearing to uh get feedback on the budget as it is shown.
I'll second.
When you say it's shown, he has such a range here, but. Is it too wide a range, Matt, in terms of what's shown?
Um, uh, no, this is, this is specific. Um, the the range is in your your power to adopt anything smaller than this. So we're advertising a specific.
Another discussion?
Hi. Hi.
Commending the the volunteers in our community, business owners, church leaders for a wonderful Easter event on Saturday. The farmer's market, a little petting zoo. It's a lot, a lot of fun in town. And a an excellent birthday event is coming up this weekend with um. Uh, all my thanks to our friends at Scan and Here and other community groups. We have tree planting, trail repairs, guided hikes and trail runs, a special farmer's market, what party, that'll be a wonderful day in town. The um, Charlottesville Admiral Convention and Visitors Bureau is helping us with marketing on that. I visit their board meeting today. And they have some excellent regional marketing initiatives. They're always hosting travel writers and buying advertising time that includes us. Their website, visit charlottesville.org, includes Scottsville businesses. They they've launched a new program that they're very proud of called Discover Black Seaville, um, focusing on minority owned businesses. And that includes um, Scottsville representatives as well. Um, they did a great job um, promoting um. Minority targeted media. Um, how how do black tourists find black owned businesses to visit? And posted those travel writers, which is not something they've ever done before. Um, so that included uh mention of Scottsville. Also, congratulations to the Batteau um, outfitters Business running their trips. I've met I've met them. They're very happy to be starting a business in town. And their um, their bookings are filling up through the summer. So they're a nice addition and that included a Washington Post travel piece.
Wow.
Putting Scottsville and the word Batteau um, on the map in the DC area.
Where are they storing the boat, the Batteau?
Uh, on the South Bank.
Oh, really? Oh, that's it? That little thing there?
Later when you get close to it.
Okay, it looks much bigger.
I did want to give staff a shout out because we were in the January February edition of Virginia District League Magazine. I know you guys hustled up that attention, but we got attention for being a B city and using our ARCA funds to support the planning process down here for access to the game trigger. Which is happening this Saturday with the tree planting. So I was very pleased to see our town getting a spotlight in that magazine for what we're doing with our.
But since we're talking about spotlights, last two articles on a date of progress of. Uh, one didn't shed a very good light on the talent and the second one, uh, Ms. Ray will just didn't have a fact straight. In fact, I don't think she had a fact straight at the time. I wish we could proofread, you know, what she wants to publish before she published it. Um, she's talking about the Bird Street expansion referring to Paul Letdown, you know. Paul Letdown had nothing to do with that.
I'll try, I'll try to provide better background on this.
Well, the thing is, we we got to be careful what we say to her. And you really, I mean, really, she's, I've been misquoted and um. Someone else accused me of of misreading her for all at one time. So, um, yeah, we are, if we're dealing not only with her, with the public, you know, if you say this out there. And. I just wish we could, uh, you know, like I say, proofread it before it goes in the back.
Danny, just just so I say this in response to what you said, I don't even know how many times I've ever been quoted in the paper and I think probably with the. If I count them all up, I think there was one time the article got a total right. And I don't, that's not an insult. It's just very different. And I say that as a reference to like media reporters and I found. The times that they were the most accurate. It's it's kind of like when you gave them the most information and information sheets. Even the ones who were trying to do a good job, often there's so much information, let alone those who aren't or or have gender or something. But I'm just saying it's 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 kind of commonplace for the. Facts that are right.
Some of the best results I've seen is when we write a press release. And most of that press release goes in slowly.
Yeah.
Um, but in a in a busy event, it's harder to pick out the pieces.
But anyway, I've just been kind of saddened by the last two articles by this one particular reporter's. The tactic.
Anything else, everybody? Welcome this queer to town. You're an application for the Chamber of Commerce. Did you get it? Because did they tell you we are an affiliate of Charlottesville Chamber and anything you do gets promoted to forty two hundred businesses up there? So right here, most adjourned.
Please adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you everybody for coming.